At this time, ladies and gentlemen, at this time we'd like to call the meeting to order. I'm going to ask Councilor Stan, and will Councilwoman Stanley please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
This is for the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm going to ask Councilman Curran to please lead us in prayer.
Together let us pray. If there is to be peace on earth and goodwill toward men, we must believe in the morality of the universe. We must not lose that hope, and we must pray for that dream. That one day men will rise up and see that they are made to live together as brothers. That all men will be judged on the basis of their character. That men will respect the dignity and worth of the human personality. That brotherhood will be the first order of business on every legislative agenda. That those elected will work justly, love mercifully, and work humbly with their God, walk humbly with their God. With this faith, we will speed to the day when there will be peace on earth and goodwill toward men. In the words of Martin Luther King Jr., "We ask your blessings, Lord, on this council as we begin the work of 2008, a new year of grace for the citizens of our city." We continue to pray for the servicemen and women and their families as they work to defend our cherished freedoms. Amen.
At this time, will the clerk please call the roll?
McMahon, Nagashat, Johnson, Trombetta, Caladino, Carvo, Esposito, Sadi, Perkins, Visconti, Sheenice, Vitella, Diggs, Taisholz, Arcanti, Curran, Knapp, Levy, Riley, Seaberry, Stanley.
There being twenty present and one absent, let the record reflect that Councilman Perkins is out of town tonight on business. The first thirty minutes of each council meeting is reserved for public speaking. We'd ask that any members of the public that wish to address the council this evening, do so regarding an item that is specifically on the agenda. You must be a resident and/or taxpayer of the city of Danbury. Seeing that we have a large amount of people that want to address the council, I'm going to ask that you keep your comments as direct and concise to the point as you can, so that we may permit as many people as possible to be able to speak. In addition to that, I'm going to ask that you refrain from applause here inside the council chambers. Applause only slows down the speaking order unless people have an opportunity to go ahead and state their opinion. In addition to that also, we ask that you maintain decorum within the council chambers as we are conducting business here for the residents of the city of Danbury. So with that, is there any member of the public who wishes to address the council this evening? Manu, you can go first. Please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. My name is Emmanuela Lima. I live at 32 Farview Avenue. I am a resident of the city of Danbury, and I would like to address the council tonight on item nineteen on your agenda. It's regarding the partnership with ICE. And I really would like to ask the council to consider its position on it and take it to a committee to study it further. My main concern, being a member of the community that also works one-on-one with members of the immigrant community, documented or undocumented, that the work of the police will become very hard when we've seen increased drug activity in our city. And I think that they could be key because they're living in the areas where the drug activity is happening. And they're not related to the actual trafficking of the drugs, but they are living in the diminished neighborhoods of the downtown, and it could be a great asset to help in the police. Unfortunately, the Danbury Public Police is not working on establishing a relationship with those communities. They used to run a column in our paper to inform the community. They no longer do so. There seems to be a lack of interest on their part to inform the community on what they need to do in order to be upstanding citizens of Danbury. And without that communication, I think it's going to be very hard for the police to do its work, and with this partnership, it's going to be even harder. So I please ask you to consider that for the safety of all Danburyans, regardless of where they come from. They live here, and we have to keep everyone safe.
Thank you.
Gerard O'Callahan, Danbury, 136 Pembroke Road. Jesus is the Lord. Good evening. God bless the United States of America, and I hope everybody has a happy and healthy New Year. Listen, about item nineteen, I just want to remind everybody here about the urgency of 287G and programs like it that will address the immigration issue. As we've seen in Danbury and in other places around the state and the country, we have a serious problem. Our hospitals are going under, going bankrupt, as we've seen in Waterbury. We have a serious problem meeting the burdens that illegal immigration brings upon us. It's also brought the wages down for middle-class and lower-middle-class citizens like myself, who was a contractor, because we cannot compete with the foreign work that's done illegally that works at a price wage that is less than competitive here. And of course, as we know, those wages in the countries where the immigrants come from is much greater, that they can go back there, and it's really like they're making five times what I make under normal circumstances when they go back to their own country. But having said that, I just want to remind everybody that what you do here as a body and similar groups around the country, similar common councils and government everywhere, is so important to what happens with this. The only reason we have this problem in the first place is because government on the federal, state, and local levels have turned their back on the citizenry and the laws of this land. That's why the immigration laws have not been enforced. And likewise, as we've seen in grassroots groups around the country, you see it every night on Lou Dobbs, certain groups on the local level are starting to enforce the law, and that's how we're going to make a difference. The federal government cannot be a police force for the whole country. And I just want to say one thing further, that as you've seen, this contract in 287G allows the local government of Danbury to work with the federal government. But in our charter, in the Danbury Charter, there's also a provision which allows you to incorporate any immigration law, any federal law at all into the ordinances of the Danbury, you know, the ordinances of Danbury, which you could incorporate 1324 as well, along with 287G, so that contractors and those that encourage illegal aliens to be here will be prosecuted. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Jean.
I would like to address the nineteen point on the agenda as well. My name is Jean Heslop, 10 Moran Avenue, Danbury. First of all, I think that we had very short notice as a public of Danbury on what exactly this ordinance is, the program rather. I think that we've had very little information about exactly what this would mean to us, how many, if any, of our tax dollars are going to go to fund this program, exactly which parts of this huge umbrella program that we would be using here in Danbury, exactly what goes into the training of the agents, I mean, the police officers who would go and train with ICE. I have serious questions about that, like for instance, are they going to also take up language training in both Spanish and Portuguese so that they can actually communicate and question these people fairly and justly when they perform their arrests or investigations? One of the biggest things that I find very disturbing is the amount of rhetoric driving the urgency to have this sort of program. I have been hearing immense amounts of dehumanizing speech about our immigrant population, and I am scared that that, combined with the cooperation of local police officers with the federal agency of ICE, will further polarize this community. I happen to know as our members of our community, our immigrant community, who have already felt discriminated against, and as a case of racial profiling, I know that many of them are actually here in the room tonight, and many have not felt brave enough to even come here tonight. I am worried that under this program, immigrants will be more and more terrified to basically admit when they have been a victim of a crime or a victim of racial profiling, of racism and discrimination, if they feel no sympathy from our local police. I think these are real issues. There are many immigrants in our community who are contributing immense amounts to our community financially and socially, and we really need to be sensitive to them, and I'm afraid that this will actually just further polarize them and intimidate them from fully integrating into our society.
Any other members of the public?
Gary Falconfall, 10 Perrahott Road, Danbury. I'd also like to speak on agenda item nineteen. Several months ago, there was a tear-jerking article in the News Times about a family that was broken up because immigration and naturalization sent the illegal immigrants home while the U.S.-born legal daughter remained here. I remember commenting to my wife at the time that that should be required reading for everybody in the countries from which the illegal immigrants come. They should be made aware of the potential heartbreak that they subject themselves to when they come here without the proper documentation. On the same token, I think the decision tonight isn't so much about rounding up and sending back the estimated 11,000 illegals that are here now, but it's more about sending a message through them back to their hometowns. And that message has to be that illegal immigrants are now no longer welcome in Danbury, that if they choose to break the immigration laws and come here, they're going to wake up every morning wondering if today's the day they're going to be caught. They're going to walk down the street looking over their shoulders, wondering if the ICE man cometh. They should be made aware that they'd be better staying home and having peace of mind than coming here and perhaps having more material possessions, but also having the fear of being caught and sent back. If the council tonight votes in favor of this proposal and that message gets through, I think the 11,000 that are here now will probably still be here five years from now. But if the council votes the other way and this message does not get through, I would expect five years from now, the illegal population in Danbury will probably be 20,000 to 25,000. And I hope you'll all consider the implications of that when casting your vote on whether or not Danbury should partner with ICE. Thank you.
So your hand's been up, right there.
I'm Jay Weiner from 150 Brushy Hill Road in Danbury. I just wanted to make a few comments. One is that the obvious reason that the federal government doesn't want to do anything, and it's political suicide to consider immigration issues now, is because many people realize what a good thing they have going, or what a good thing we have going. And there's some major ethical questions as to whether we should profit from what essentially is a population of indentured servants. The second thing I would say is that I would like to know if it's been studied, what would happen to the economy of a place like Danbury. I mean, there was a town in New Jersey called Riverside, New Jersey, which staged a very, very vigorous anti-immigrant program, got rid of most of the immigrants, and the economy of the town collapsed. And I wouldn't be surprised if that kind of thing would happen in Danbury as well, because we really don't have the data to support it, to understand it. Third thing is that I'm not so sure that the immigrant population is so invested in crime in Danbury. I'd like to see some data about that. I think that's a very nice label and will empower people to do things that may or may not be correct, but I'm not sure there's any data to support it. Fourth, there's been a lot of issue about the use of services, and I'm asking you whether or not it costs the taxpayer more money because immigrants are using some of the services than they would use if we had no immigrants, if we were paying people a tremendous amount of increased money for the services that the immigrants do. Next, two more points. One is that I am somewhat embarrassed and against using my tax money for this kind of program. I think it's unfair, and I think it's going to be costly, and I don't think it's going to be cost-effective. And the final thing I want to say is that I have met a number of people in Danbury and elsewhere who are very angry at the immigrant population. The thing that gets me is that they're not so angry at the Enron population, and I wonder who is costing them more money, the Enron population or the immigrant population. I think people should think about that. Thank you.
Okay, folks, I want to remind you, I want to remind you that applause is not appropriate. We're trying to get as many people in to speak. This is not a football rally or some kind of cheering section. We've got business to conduct. Ma'am, your hand's been up.
I would like to thank Honorable Mayor Bowden and Common Counsel for addressing the issue. My name is Belinda Garden. I reside at 24 Rowan Street, Danbury, Connecticut. It's not so much immigrants. The issue is illegal. My ancestors, back to my great-grandparents, great-great-grandparents, were born in the United States of America. We had to, they had to, all of us have to, that a U.S. citizen follow federal, state, and local laws. Why shouldn't that apply to everyone? There shouldn't be a problem. If you're coming over here illegally, I don't think anyone has an issue with that. The problem is when you come over illegally, there are people waiting, many people waiting in line to come to the United States of America doing it the right way. When we sanction them, making them stay in line and allowing illegals to come over here and just enjoy, I don't feel that's right. And what I would like for all of you to consider when you're voting, what is right? Is it right for me to have to follow the laws? And they not? Born and raised in the United States, I pay my taxes. I worked all my life. My ancestors did too. So what is the problem? If it takes ICE, so be it.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Joe McGarrett from Perso Drive in Danbury. I have a problem with the illegals. I have no problem with anybody else, but from the top of our government all the way down, nobody wants to do anything. If anybody needs help, I was born in Hazelton, Pennsylvania. We have a lovely Italian boy that's mayor. His name is Jay Barletta. He came up there, and he got rid of the people that don't belong, and he's taking Hazelton back to where it belongs. And he'll be happy to support any other program that goes, and he got rid of all the good little ambulance chasers that come around that have been telling people they have rights. And I'd like to find out if Jean Heslop, if she's a citizen of the country. I have, I have, I have a problem with the illegals in the sense that my wife is dying right now in my bed at home with cancer of the brain. I can't get help from anybody, but yet I go into Danbury Hospital, and there's 35 and 40 people that are illegal sitting in the emergency room. And I said to one fellow, could you tell me something? He says, "No, speak of the English." I said, "Well, if you can say 'no, speak of the English,' then learn the language or go back where you belong." You go to Cuba, and you tell Pedro Castro that you have rights. You'll get a right, right through a bullet through your head. I have to go. I have to go. I have Health Net and I have Medicare.
Let's wrap it up now.
I can't use my Health Net in our illustrious hospital here because they don't take Health Net if you have Medicare. But if you don't have Medicare, they take Health Net. So I was forced to go to St. Mary's, the 31-day street, with my daughter driving my wife there, and I got a bill from them for $50, where if I went to this dump up on the hill, it would have been thousands. And that's why I'm angry. I have a daughter-in-law came here from Brazil. Her and my son went up there, citizens. Her mother and father came over, they're citizens, and they took 18 people to Hartford to become citizens. That's all I think anybody is asking for, is to become a citizen. Otherwise, get out and go back where you belong.
Patricia.
I'd like to begin my remarks with an apology to you, Mayor Bowden. I think it was the end of your first term or the beginning of your second, and you had come out with some public statements on what you wanted to do in terms of dealing with the day laborers. Oh, I'm speaking to item number nineteen, with the day laborers that assemble at Kennedy Park. And you had some very positive and humane points of view. Because I have been a long-term resident of Danbury and have been so used to the humane and compassionate and just manner in which we as a community have dealt with all of our human issues, I was lulled by not supporting you publicly. Many people I know in this room right now and in the community were also lulled because throughout all of these many years, we worked together on some very serious issues in this community, always with the concept of trying to resolve them in a positive manner. I am 100% opposed to the city of Danbury entering into an arrangement with ICE. That being said, there is not enough information for any of us to really discuss this issue in depth, honestly, to come to a community decision. I am requesting that the council remit that to an ad hoc committee. Let there be public discussion, public dialogue, and if at the conclusion it still is a thing to go, I would suggest strongly that 21 people not make such a dramatic decision for a community that has always been so humane and compassionate. Let it be a decision of vote, one person, one vote. I would like to see if the character and soul of the city of Danbury that I spent most of my life and raised my children and worked so very hard on so many difficult issues, the race riots, the Ku Klux Klan, the influx of citizens from Puerto Rico, the Southeast Asian resettlement issues, all of the murmurings there were the same murmurings now that have reached a crescendo because of one word: illegal. And yes, the short answer is, are they here against the law? You're absolutely right, and that is not a criminal offense, and it is the jurisdiction of the federal government, and they have been remiss in not taking a stand so that we, as citizens, are not divided against each other, we who see each other in our churches, in our schools, shopping, and on the street. I want to end, I want to conclude with this from a similar group that was before Mike Huckabee and John McCain several weeks ago. And the discussion was about these issues, and the reality was they were tough. But at the conclusion, both Huckabee and McCain said, "We must not forget that who we are talking about are people, are human beings like us. We are a better people. We are a better country." And I will say, for the city of Danbury, we are a better community than that. I strongly urge you not to take a vote this evening, to do whatever you need to have more of a public dialogue by the number of people who are here who wish to speak. We certainly have a lot of talking to do.
Ms. Waller.
I'm not speaking on nineteen, I'm speaking on nine. I want to encourage you to think seriously about the tax break for senior citizens. I speak about it everywhere I go, and I really think it's necessary. I thank Mr. Councilman Levy for putting this in, especially with the increase in assessments. We are having a problem making ends meet, a lot of us, and I really encourage you to do whatever you can do with the state government, with the city government, or whatever. We really need help. And I'll give you one different point of view on number nineteen. I had an automobile accident two and a half years ago by a gentleman who was not legally in this country, who had no insurance. My bills are running around $70,000 because of that accident, and I may lose my driver's insurance because of it. So there's a point of view of just an average citizen that has been heavily impacted by what goes on when illegals are in the country and driving illegally. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Elise Marciano. I live at 179 Long Ridge Road in Danbury. I'd like to address the council on item nineteen. I think it's time for Danbury to take a stand in this country because the illegal alien cadre is trying to take over and redo our laws in this country. And I don't think the citizens of Danbury or the citizens of this country want a group of people who are not here legally telling us that our immigration laws are wrong and should be changed. I think that for our country to remain a country, it must enforce the laws, and this means enforcing the immigration laws, and this means right down to Danbury, Connecticut, where we have a considerable illegal alien problem. This is unacceptable. It is impacting all our citizens not only financially, it impacts the children in overcrowded schools, it impacts our hospital and our medical care. I think it's time that you people on the council stood up for the rule of law and make a decision tonight on how to address this problem by partnering with ICE. It is essential that ICE have police chiefs and police organizations all around the country helping them try to deal with the illegal problem in this country. And I think, members of the council, it is up to you to start the process here in Connecticut because our governor and our legislation in Hartford are not going to do anything about it. They're hiding under their desks. It is time for you to have a leadership role in this state and say to the people of Connecticut, "We do not approve of illegal aliens in Connecticut, and we are going to partner with ICE here in Danbury to relieve this problem and give our citizens the protection that they need." Apparently, there is a lot of misunderstanding about what 287G provides for our police officers. I suggest, since you have a report from Chief Baker and from our corporate counsel, that when the time comes to discuss this problem, you address your questions to them. To put this in an ad hoc committee would only give the citizens of Danbury more time to talk about the same things, and obviously, they are not well informed on the issues involving 287G. I think you would get the answers that you're looking for and the cover... I think you would get the answers that you're looking for and the coverage of the items that you want from the police chief and from corporate counsel. And I urge you to question them and do this tonight, and then pass this resolution. Thank you.
Sir, is there anybody else who wants, come on forward, sir, on the left there. Anybody else who wants to speak on something other than item 19? Okay, Mario, you're next.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Let me first say that I'm not a resident of Danbury, so I wanted to ask if you would consider a waiver of the provision. I am a practicing attorney and do all my work in Danbury. I've lived in Bethel for 27 years. And I do believe I could give a perspective concerning the implications of, if I could just finish my statement, then you can say no. If I could address the criminal-
Let me just say, our rules are very clear, unfortunately. It's in our charter. And I appreciate your passion and wanting to, you know, speak tonight, but-
I just think I have a unique perspective dealing-
Perhaps you want to put your comments in writing to the council. You certainly can mail them a letter-
Then I'll do that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. DiLorenzo.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, forgive my attire. My wife told me the last moment that I was late for this meeting, so I rushed out of the house. I don't really dress like this.
You've been at a few of these meetings before.
You know, we've compromised English language. We know what illegal alien means, but we've changed it to undocumented. They're simply undocumented because they're here illegally. So many things transpire in that community that as a principal of the school and a father, I would not permit my children to do. I often wonder what would happen to me if I were caught falsifying my social security card, or falsifying my license, or driving without a license. You know, I look back to Thanksgiving when there was a traffic stop, and one-third of the population that was stopped didn't have a driver's license. Not only is it a subculture, but it's one that is constantly violating the laws of this country. I, for one, don't want to stand for it. I believe that if the police department, whose charge is to uphold the law, joins with ICE, I think it's something that had been, should have been come a long time ago. Thank you very much.
That was Mario DiLorenzo. What's your address, Mario? What's your address? Your address, if you could just give it to the doc. Ma'am?
Good evening. My name is Mary Collins. I live at 2 Frontier Lane. I want to thank the council for their time on this difficult issue of item 19. You're very brave souls. I feel, I would like, I would hope that you would consider studying this issue more. I think it is very, as you can see, there's a lot of passions on both sides of this issue. I feel that it's been very divisive. I feel that you need to ask the police department, and apparently, you have a report now, what is the percentage of violent criminals in our city that are, happen to be undocumented? What difference will this make to them in doing their job? I personally feel very safe in this city. I haven't felt an impact that has been negative from the, from the diversity of this community. I like the diversity in our community. So I feel it, it's an issue that there's a lot more questions on. And I also wonder about the lawsuit that's pending to our city, whether, about from the 11 who were arrested, if this would impact, if you passed this tonight, if that's going to impact that, and would it cause more cost for us as citizens? And I wonder about the tone that we're setting in our community about having people who are here legally and naturalized citizens to be stopped on the street. I think that is not the America I want to live in, not in the city of Danbury I want to be in. So I really urge you to try and consider more deeply this issue and not rush. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. At 8:05 PM, that concludes our 30 minutes of public speaking. I appreciate all the individuals that spoke tonight at the common council meeting. With that, we're going-
I think, Mr. Mayor, you have a very large-
Excuse me, ma'am. With all due respe, with all due respect, our charter is very clear. It's 30 minutes, there's no, there's no room for extension. I understand, I understand your frustration if you-
How many times have you had this many people in the office?
We've had this many people in office before. But it's, it's 30 minutes. If you want to comment to the council, you're welcome to call them, to contact them, email them, write them letters, and certainly express your opinion.
I have some information I'd like to pass out to the council. Is that so?
You can leave that with the clerk. Okay. At this time, we'll move on with our regular portion of our meeting. We have several announcements this evening, so before we conduct the meeting, I just want to remind, ladies and gentlemen, of those announcements rather late in terms of events going on in the city this month. Of important would be for those who are interested in Ward 6 or just interested council people, we have some improvements going on at Boringer Ingelheim. And those- That- Those improvements that are going on are maybe of public interest, so there's a public hearing. We encourage you to come in, and if you're a member, that project's been going on about four years. In addition to that, January 21st is Martin Luther King Jr.'s birthday. City Hall will be closed. We do have an event that typically occurs on Sunday or possibly Monday, sponsored by the NAACP. We don't have the exact details. We'll get that to you as soon as you can. We ask the council to participate that. And on January the 26th is the Ninth Annual Mayor's Ball. Certainly look for a strong participation by members of the council. It's always been a good time, and we certainly enjoyed all the work we've done there. In addition to that, we have two wedding anniversaries of note this month. January 26th is Greg and Barbara Seaberry's wedding anniversary. Congratulations, Councilman Seaberry. In addition to that, January 28th is Lee and Mary Teicholz's wedding anniversary. Congratulations. Okay. And that concludes the announcements for this evening. Mr. President, the minutes, please. Your Honor, at this time, I'd like to make a motion that we waive the reading of the minutes, as all members have copies, and copies are on file in the city clerk's office. Motion made and seconded by Councilman Trambetta. Just want to remind council members, please use the microphone so you can be heard. Is there any deletions, corrections, or additions or changes to the minutes as presented? Seeing none, then I'll try your minds. All's in favor, acceptance of the minutes, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, signify by saying nay. Ayes have it, motion carries unanimously. Mr. Majority Leader, the consent calendar, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. Consent calendar for January 3, 2008. Number 4, receive the communication and approve the request for $20,000 to be transferred into special service account number 2010.5052 due to the ongoing events. Number 7, receive the communication and approve the appropriation from the historic document reserve account 2.2129 to the town clerk's office equipment line item 1160.5701 as requested. Number 10, receive the communication and accept the proposal sidewalk easement. Number 16, receive the communication and adopt the resolution that will allow the city of Danbury's Board of Education to apply for and accept funding from the state of Connecticut Department of Social Services for the before and after-school program. Number 17, receive the communication and adopt the resolution authorizing the mayor of the city of Danbury or the fire chief, as is designated, to apply for and accept said grant and to execute such additional documents as may be required to effectuate the purposes thereof. Number 18, receive the communication and authorize corporate council to acquire necessary easements for the reconstruction of the Baptist Avenue Bridge over Mary Brook. Number 20, receive the communication and approve the proposed water main extension at 119 Westville Avenue, Beckett Street, pending a positive planning commission recommendation and subject to the standard eight steps and conditions. Number 21, receive the communication and approve the proposed sanitary sewer and water main extensions at 88 South Street, pending a positive planning commission recommendation and subject to the standard eight steps and conditions, with a ninth step requiring the acquisition of the state of Connecticut Department of Transportation approval for work within South Street. Number 22, receive the report and approve the recommendations of the committee. Number 23, receive the report and approve the recommendations of the committee. Number 24, receive the report and approve the recommendations of the committee. 25, receive the report and approve the recommendations of the committee. And finally, number 26, receive the report and approve the recommendations of that committee.
Thank you, Mr. Seaberry. It's a pleasure, council. Councilwoman Teicholz?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to make a motion to accept the consent calendar as presented.
Seconded, it's been made and seconded by Councilwoman Negashet. Is there any discussion regarding the consent calendar? Seeing none, then I'll try your minds. All's in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, signify by saying nay. Ayes have it, motion carries unanimously. Madam Clerk, item 1, please.
Communication, appointment to the police department. Your council members, I hereby submit for your confirmation the appointment of the following two individuals to the position of police officer. Ms. Amity LaFontana of 125 Paper Mill Road in New Milford. Ms. LaFontana graduated from New Milford High School in New Milford, Connecticut, and is currently working towards her bachelor's degree in justice and law administration from Western Connecticut State University. Ms. LaFontana currently works for the Newtown Police Department and has been a police officer for the past five years.
It's a pleasure, council. Councilman Trambetta.
Thank you, Your Honor. At this time, I'd like to make a motion to receive the communication to approve the appointment of Amy LaFontana to the city of Danbury Police Department.
Motion's been made and seconded. I just want to make a correction to the record as Amity. Any discussion about Amity's appointment? Seeing none, then I'll try your minds. All's in favor, please signify by, that was seconded by, excuse me, that was seconded by Mr. Johnson. Seeing no objections, I'll try your minds. All's in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, signify by saying nay. Ayes have it, motion carries unanimously. Amity, congratulations. Why don't you stand and be recognized? On behalf of the council and the mayor's office, I want to congratulate you and wish you all the best as you begin your career here with the city of Danbury. Good luck and keep up the good work. Madam Clerk?
Second position is Mr. Garrett Bell of 606 Nicole Boulevard in Oakley, Florida. Mr. Bell graduated from Carmel High School in Carmel, New York. He holds an associate's degree in aircraft maintenance technology from Emory Riddle Aeronautical University in Daytona Beach, Florida. He has been working as a police officer for Florida for the past 12 years, and is currently a resource officer. Mr. Bell also served on active duty in the U.S. Marine Corps for five years as an aircraft maintenance technician, earning the rank of Sergeant E5. Thank you for consideration of these appointments. Sincerely, Mark P. Bowden, Mayor.
It's a pleasure, council. Councilman Esposito.
Yes, Your Honor. I move that the council accept the correspondence and approve the appointment of Mr. Garrett Bell to position of police officer to the city of Danbury.
Motion's made and seconded by Mr. Sheanisi. Any discussion about Mr. Bell's appointment? Seeing none, then I'll try your minds. All's in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, signify by saying nay. Ayes have it, motion carries unanimously. Mr. Bell, why don't you stand and be recognized? Congratulations. Welcome back to the cold weather, and we wish you the best. How do you say that name again? For the, Oakley. Well, welcome back, and we certainly look forward to you beginning your career with the Danbury Police Department, and many years of success to come in the future. Madam Clerk, item 2, please.
Communication, donation to the Department of Elderly Services. Your Mayor Bowden and members of the council, the Department of Elderly Services has received a donation of a defibrillator that was initiated through Mr. Tom Nolan of the Lions Club and paid for by Mr. John Klein and the Union Savings Bank. We are very grateful for this donation and ask the council at the January meeting to kindly accept the donation valued at $1,500. Thank you respectfully, Susan M. Kumanyo, Director of Elderly Services.
It's a pleasure, council. Councilman Calhoun?
Thank you, Your Honor. At this time, I'd like to make a motion that we receive the communication and accept the donation of the defibrillator and send the appropriate letters of thanks to Mr. Tom Nolan of the Lions Club, Mr. John Klein, and Union Savings Bank.
Motion made and seconded by Mr. Levy. Any discussion regarding the donation? Seeing none, then I'll try your minds. All's in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, signify by saying nay. Ayes have it, motion carries unanimously. Madam Clerk, item 3, please.
Communication, donation to the Danbury Library. Your Mayor Bowden, the Danbury Library has received a donation from Jean M. Cook, 25 Washington Avenue, Danbury, Connecticut, in the amount of $10. Please place this item on the agenda for the January common council meeting, as this donation needs to be deposited into the library fund, 4651 donations. Sincerely, Mark P. Haskell, Library Director.
It's a pleasure, council. Councilwoman Negashet?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to make a motion to receive the communication and accept the donation deposited into the library fund dot 4651 donations and send an appropriate letter of thanks.
Second.
Motion made and seconded by Councilwoman McMahon. Any discussion about the donation? Seeing none, then I'll try your minds. All's in favor, please signify by saying aye. All opposed, signify by saying nay. Ayes have it, motion carries unanimously. Item 4 was consent. Madam Clerk, item 5, please.
Communication, ambulance and advanced life support agreement.
It's a pleasure, council. Councilman Curran?
I'd like to refer this to an ad hoc committee. The committee to consist of the fire chief, representative from the mayor's office, representative from DHCA, corporation counsel, and the director of planning.
No seconds required on the ad hoc referral. The committee shall be the following: Councilman Curran, Councilman Knapp, and Councilman Disconti. Madam Clerk, item 6, please.
Communication, additional funding appropriation requests, primaries, and referendums.
It's a pleasure, council. Councilwoman Diggs?
Thank you, Your Honor. I want to make the motion to receive the communication and approve the transfer of $30,210 to the registrar's office for the Democratic and Republican presidential primaries and referendum.
Second. Motion made and seconded by Councilman Rotella. Is there any discussion about this appropriation? Seeing none, then I'll try your minds. All's in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, signify by saying nay. Ayes have it, motion carries unanimously. Item 7 was consent. Madam Clerk, item 8, please.
Communication, Grandview Drive addresses.
It's a pleasure, council. Councilman Riley?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to make a motion to send item 8 to an ad hoc committee, including corporation counsel and the director of planning.
Ad hoc committee shall consist of the following: Councilman Riley-
Thanks a lot, post guy.
You wanted it, you got it. You asked for it. Councilman Johnson and Councilman Levy. Madam Clerk, item 9, please.
Communication, request for ad hoc.
With the pleasure, council. Councilman Stanley?
Thank you, Your Honor. I was wondering, is there an outstanding committee already in place for this?
There is, chaired by Councilman Trambetta. I have to make one replacement on that committee, which I'll do at the end of the meeting.
I will, then I would like to refer this to the already standing committee.
That, that referral will be to the existing committee, and I'll name, actually, why don't I name the committee now while I've got it? But I believe Councilman Trambetta was chairing that committee. Councilman Knapp, Councilman Perkins are on that committee.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Let's restate the committee. Madam Clerk, item 10 was consent. Item 11, please.
Communication, transfer of property Eagle Road Center LLC.
It's a pleasure, council. Councilwoman McMahon?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to refer this to an ad hoc committee with corporation counsel, the director of public works, and a report from planning.
Ad hoc committee shall consist of the following: Councilman Seaberry, Councilman Arcanti, and Councilman Sheanisi. Madam Clerk, item 12, please.
Communication, license easement New Hope Baptist Church.
It's a pleasure, council. Councilwoman Teicholz?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to refer this to an ad hoc committee consisting of corporation counsel and director of planning.
Ad hoc committee shall consist of Councilman Seaberry, Councilman Arcanti, and Councilman Sheanisi. Madam Clerk, item 13, please.
Communication, encroachment easement 37 Rocky Glen Road.
It's a pleasure, council. Councilman Johnson?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to send this to an ad hoc committee consisting of corporation counsel, director of public works, and a report from planning.
Ad hoc committee shall consist of Councilman Seaberry, Councilman Arcanti, and Councilman Sheanisi. I figure you can bang them all out in one night.
Just a point of clarification, Your Honor, that the-
Sure, Mr. Sidon.
Thank you, Your Honor. That the director of public works, that would include input and report from the city engineer?
Absolutely. We'll, we'll guide that through the director of public works office. We'll, but we'll guide that through the director of public works office. Madam Clerk, item 14, please.
Communication, draining and grading easement Grandview Drive.
It's a pleasure, council. Councilman Arcanti?
Thank you, Your Honor. Refer this to an ad hoc committee consisting of a corporation counsel and director of public works.
Ad hoc committee shall consist of Councilwoman Teicholz, Councilwoman Stanley, and Councilman Esposito. Madam Clerk, item 15, please.
Communication, request for sewer and water modification of lines Danbury Fair Mall.
It's a pleasure, council. Councilman Knapp?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to refer this, uh, to ad hoc committee, including the director of public works, corporation counsel, and a report from the planning.
Ad hoc committee shall consist of the following: Councilwoman Teicholz, Councilwoman Stanley, Councilman Esposito. Items 16 through 18 were consent. Madam Clerk, item 19.
Report, ICE access. A is mayor, B is corporation counsel, and C is police department.
Councilman Calvo?
Thank you, Your Honor. At this time, I'd like to make a motion that we waive the reading of the minutes of the reports, as all members have copies, and copies are on file in the city clerk's office.
Second. Motion made to waive the reading of the reports. Seconded by Mr. Seaberry. Any discussion about, uh, waiving the minute, the reading of the reports? Seeing none, then I'll try your minds. All's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, signify by saying nay. Uh, madam clerk, uh, or, excuse me, Mr. Calvo?
Um, thank you, Your Honor. At this time, I'd like to make a motion that we receive the communications from both the mayor's office, the chief of police office, and the corporation counsel's office, and adopt the resolution as presented.
Second. Motion made and seconded by Councilman Seaberry. Is there any discussion? Councilman Rotella?
Thank you, Your Honor. It's apparent... It's apparent we need a full and frank exchange of information and opinion in a forum where that's encouraged. Uh, this matter is important, and it's probably too important to settle realistically...
Mr. Rotella, do you have a motion to make?
I do, I do.
Need to make...
Therefore, with the members' understanding, I'm referring this to an ad hoc. Uh, please remember that in due course, this position will arrive back here at this time.
Ad hoc committee, uh...
Thank you, Your Honor.
We're going to refer this to, for a full and frank discussion, to a committee of the whole, uh, where each of you, uh, will be requested to attend the committee of the whole meeting. Uh, reports will be reviewed by myself, uh, the, uh, corporation counsel's office, the chief of police, uh, and, uh, we'll have a discussion at that time per Mr. Rotella's motion.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Madam, uh, clerk, item 20 through 26 is on consent. Item... Mr. President, department reports.
Thank you, Your Honor. At this time, I'd like to make a motion that we waive the reading of departmental reports, as all members have copies, and copies are on file in the city clerk's office.
Second. Motion made by, uh, made and seconded by Councilman Negerschaff. Is there any discussion under department reports? Start down this way and work our way around, so, Mr. Levy, you have the floor.
Your Honor, uh, I was wondering, with the cold weather especially, what is the, um, through the chair to the director of public works, what is the situation with sand availability to, uh, citizens in the past? I remember them being able to have either access or delivery.
Uh, Mr. Idola can answer that for us. I will say that we are, just for the council's certification, we're migrating over to a new material, uh, but we are still going to be ordering some sand, but, Mr. Idola?
Sure. Um, we have and will continue to have access to a sand pile over at Public Works for residents to come over and actually get some sand to treat their driveways. Uh, there is, uh, a pile there. Uh, it is accessible to every resident, and actually quite a few residents over the last couple of storms have come in and actually taken some sand, so, uh, there is, uh, and we replenish that as it goes down.
Mr. Levy, further discussion?
Thank you very much. I had some concerns with various residents and the ice information.
Thank you, Mr. Levy. Uh, anybody on this side under department reports? Seeing none, then, Mr. Visconti?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'll be brief. Um, just a couple of things. There was an article in the paper recently about, uh, one of our, uh, I believe the assistant dog warden who had helped to, uh, retrieve a cat that had been lost in an accident. Unfortunately, someone had passed away in the accident, and it took a couple of weeks, two or three weeks or whatever, but he did, uh, a great job, and I think he should be commended for the job that he did. The other thing I'd just like to say very quickly is, we had a, a snowstorm a month or so ago, the first one we had, and I, unfortunately, my wife and I were tied up in that traffic jam, and we did notice the police giving the escort to the public works vehicles. I think that was a great idea, and, uh, again, they're all to be commended for a job well done. Thank you.
Anytime you want to sit in my office and take those calls, you're welcome. I miss your cheery voice when you call. But we got it done, right, Mr. Idola? We got it done. Uh, further discussion on department reports. And by the way, uh, fantastic job, Chief Baker, thank you for that, and Mr. Idola, thank you for that. I think Mr. Visconti's comments are well taken. Mr. Sadi?
Thank you, Your Honor. Several members of this council in the past have pointed out that the police department has increased their traffic enforcement, and not only that, but with the reduction in crime, we believe, from increased enforcement, just want to point that out, uh, on the record that, uh, I know I am, and I'm sure most, if not all, the members of this council are very pleased with significant increased traffic enforcement for multiple violations. It has been seen in the neighborhoods. Constituents have commented on it. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Chief. Fine job this year on your crime statistics as well. Uh, further discussion on department reports. Seeing none, then, all those in favor accepting the reports as presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, signify by saying nay. Ayes have it, motion carries unanimously. Before you leave, I want to go over some committee changes, so, stand by for a second I'm going to be sunsetting. I already mentioned, uh, item 28 from the June 2006 meeting, uh, where, uh, that was Councilman Trimbetta, Councilman Knapp, and Councilman Perkins. That's the senior tax, uh, program. I just want to reiterate that. Um, item eight from the July of 2006 meeting will be sunsetted tonight, and for your application, that is a public access, since we're already broadcasting meetings. Um, item 18 from the August 2006 meeting will be, uh, chaired by Councilman Curran. That's the land exchange Terry Wild Park. Uh, that includes Councilman Seaberry and Councilman Rotella, just to remind folks who's serving on what committee. Item 14, property tax abatement for open space. Uh, since, uh, Councilman Negerschaff has another open space, uh, project, we're going to include this, so he'll be chairing that, and he replaces Councilwoman Saraceno. And just to remind the council, that's Councilman Negerschaff, Councilman Johnson, and Councilman Perkins. Uh, item six, I'll try to go slow. If you don't get something, let me know, council. Item six is the Parkland Preservation Committee. I'm replacing Councilman, at the time, Councilman Casumpis with Councilwoman Teicholz. Item 30 from February 2007, that's a 10-year, uh, end homelessness plan, as you remember. We're going to report back, I know Carl Myers is here, but we're going to convene another meeting to report back to that committee as we continue to evaluate the, the input of the plan. Uh, and Councilwoman Saraceno chaired that, and she's to be replaced by Councilwoman Stanley. And that's Councilwoman Teicholz and Councilman Perkins, just to remind you. I am sunsetting item, item 11 from the March 2007 meeting, that's established new ordinance. I am sunsetting item 27 from the April 2007 meeting, that's stricter traffic controls. I couldn't quite figure out the genesis of that ad hoc, if there's... Freddie, you were on there. If there's a major burning issue, we can put it on the agenda next month and, and sort of reconvene that, but some of the members aren't on the committee anymore. It was, uh, April 2007. September 2007, item nine, I'm replacing Councilwoman Bassa with Councilwoman Teicholz. And item 10, and then item nine was the request for ad hoc on the Ann Drive. Item 10 was widening strips Longridge Road, and I'm, again, replacing Councilwoman Bassa with Councilwoman Teicholz. At the October 2007 meeting, I'm replacing, that's the item ones, no emergency protocols, I'm going to replace Councilwoman Bassa with Councilman Knapp. So you'll be chairing that committee. With that, that, uh, pretty much rounds up all the rest of the ad hoc committees that are out there. Sex offender is extended. Pauline was serving on that. I will replace, uh, Councilwoman Bassa with Councilwoman Stanley then. Have you got that, Councilwoman Stanley? The sex offender ordinance. Beyond that, I'm extending all the rest of the committees, uh, to continue your work, and at this time, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Made by Councilman Rotella, seconded by Mr. Seaberry, all in favor of adjournment, please signify by saying aye. All opposed? We're adjourned.[1423.25]